Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. This is a meeting of Froom Town Council. I'm Andy Jones and I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everybody, we do have people online as well as here in the room. For those in the room, just the normal little housekeeping. Emergency exit is over in the rear corner of the room with an assembly point in the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor on the right with an accessible toilet just to the right of the lift. I think most of you have helped yourselves to tea and coffee and water, but do feel free as the meeting progresses. Tonight, Paul will clerk. We've got Laura, Sarah, Becca, Rachel managing the minutes, questions board, participant settings and IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel. For those councillors who are attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand. Anybody else on Zoom, please ask questions through the Q and A board. First thing on the agenda is apologies for absence. Have we had any apologies? No apologies received, so we don't need to vote on those. Declaration of councillors' interests. Anne.
I have two other registrable interests to declare. I'm a director of the Froom Independent, so therefore I will not be present for the approve the management arrangements at Agenda Item Four. I will leave the meeting after Agenda Item Three.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. And then we've got the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. I don't think there were any actions arising from that, were there, Paul?
Not that are outstanding.
No outstanding actions. Anybody have anything to comment on that? If not, can I have somebody to suggest that we approve them? Anne proposing... Oh, sorry, Nick?
Sorry, Nick Dove, Town Councillor. There was in the minutes of the last meeting, I think, an action taken by Martin about the parking issues, passing on the concerns around this just to do with the ones in Wesley Close. I'm surprised there, Nick. Are you asking me for an update?
Yes, please.
Okay, I had an email yesterday which indicated that amendments have been made and I will forward them on to you because I can't remember all of them. But there was a map and various ones. It would be useful to get your feedback on it because I'm not sure that... I certainly didn't note down all the concerns on the night and I haven't received the concerns by email, but I think most of them were addressed.
I think James got a further update on that.
Yes, thank you, Andy. So I met with the residents and businesses at Wesley Close shortly after the previous meeting and it was agreed between all of them that actually to just to remark the existing double yellows that are there and then to put in a double yellow or an H-bar across the entrance to the business to stop people from parking there. And then I sent that on to Sarah at Highways and that's probably the proposal that you've been sent today. So everybody seemed happy with what was discussed.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So I think Anne was proposing we accept the minutes. Nick seconding all those in favour. Let you count heads.
Just checking, it looks unanimous. Is anyone voting against or abstaining, just so as I can...
Yeah? No? No, everybody's in favour.
That's unanimous.
Yeah, he did second it, so yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Just before we move on to Item Two of the agenda, we do have a bit of a carryover from the town meeting earlier this month. Due to some miscommunication, we didn't actually get Karen to turn up. So I've asked Karen Stewart to come along to receive her Mayor's Award this evening. I've got it here. Hi Karen. So Karen's been a volunteer with Fairfroom for many years and a trustee for the last six. She volunteers at the Food Bank and Food at Five as well as covering holidays and office support. She's a great mentor to others, continuing her support for a charity which is close to her heart and ours. Karen has also supported Froom FM as well as being one of those people who pop up everywhere in Froom, supporting community work and building relationships in the neighbourhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The other thing, just while I'm stood, is this is going to be the last council meeting that I chair. I'm going to have to give my apologies for absence in May. So I did want to thank everybody who's made my year very special. And in particular, I know Lucy is online, so thank you Lucy, appreciate everything you've done for me. And also Laura. I have the traditional little gift for you. So for those who don't know, amongst her many duties, Laura keeps the Mayor's diary in some sort of shape and it's been quite a busy one this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, so after that little self-indulgence, back to the main agenda. Item Two is questions and comments from the public. And we're taking an unusual step this evening because there's been quite a lot of email correspondence, particularly from supporters of the Women's Football Club about concerns on the future of Badgers Hill. So I'd like to ask Peter Wheelhouse to come to the microphone and give a little update on where things are and then I'll take some questions on that from the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. And for those who don't know me, I'm Peter Wheelhouse. I'm the Economic Development and Regeneration Manager and Deputy Town Clerk for Froom Town Council. And I've actually been involved with our project at Badgers Hill since it started a few years ago. Anyway, I have a pre-prepared statement that I want to read to you. So councillors and the community will be aware that in 2022, the town council paid off substantial debts owed by the football club as owners of Badgers Hill Stadium to remove the threat of imminent repossession. This saved the football ground and enabled football to continue to be played there. Our loan repayment that was agreed with the football club was in return for an option to acquire the stadium for the community for one pound. In 2023, we exercised that option. And at the same time, we worked with the National Football Supporters Association to establish the Froom Town Community Benefit Society, the CBS, to manage the stadium. At the same time, we worked with the football club, the CBS and the FSA to secure approximately half a million pounds of grant aid to enable essential repairs and improvements to the stadium, primarily new changing rooms but also other improvements. And this project is now virtually complete. For many reasons, it's proved difficult for the CBS to gain traction in its efforts to manage and develop the stadium as a sporting and community asset. And recently, the council has been in discussion with a potential new lessee about the possibility of them taking on that responsibility. Negotiations are ongoing and there is still some way to go before a council decision can be taken. The financial details of some of the elements of the draft lease will be discussed in confidential session at the end of tonight's meeting. But what we can say is that we understand that there is a commitment from the potential lessee to support youth and women's football alongside men's football and the continuation of community benefit on the stadium.
Thank you, Peter.
Andy, at this point, I also ought to declare another registrable interest. I'm a director of the Community Benefit Society.
Thank you, Anne. We'll get that minuteed. As we've got Anna Subine, MP, in the room, maybe I should first ask Anna if she wants to comment on this topic?
Will she comment first?
Please, yeah.
Can I go up there?
Of course.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Froom Town Women. My name is Tara and I'm one of three executive officers who manage Froom Town Women. And I'm joined tonight by Tim, our Chair, Tim Vine, who served the club for 15 years, and our manager and chief exec, Ben Voland, who's led girls and women's football in Froom for over a decade. We're joined this evening by our club captain, Kieran Leanderhill, who's also here and she's in her 11th season playing for the team. But I'm not here to talk about us, I'm here to speak for the team and about what we represent. We give hundreds of hours each week because we care deeply about sport and the role it plays in people's lives. I grew up when girls were steered towards netball and hockey and boys played rugby and football. I played netball competitively at county level and through university, but it wasn't until I struggled with postnatal depression that I truly understood what sport meant. It was connection, its purpose and its healing. It genuinely helped save my life. So whilst I'm not a diehard football fan and I keep forgetting the offside rule, I do understand community, collaboration and inclusion and that's why I'm standing here. To clarify the picture at Badgers Hill, because I'm led to believe that's what's under discussion later, there are three teams that play there. Froom Town FC is the men's semi-professional team. They previously owned Badgers Hill, as Peter talked about, and the financial crisis that led to Froom Town Council stepping in. They've operated since 1904 and are a brilliant and successful side with a proud history and they've brought some incredible football to Badgers Hill over the years. Froom Town Women also play there. We're 25 years old and historically were more aligned to the men's team. We became fully independent nearly nine years ago after funds we raised were absorbed during another financial crisis. We've managed ourselves ever since. We train off-site, we clean up after ourselves, we cover our own costs and we leave a very small footprint at Badgers Hill. We have operated since 1980. We are a brilliant and successful side with a proud history and we have brought some incredible football to Badgers Hill over the years. Froom Town United, the town's largest junior club and one of the biggest in the county, also plays... Its under-18s team also plays at Badgers Hill. It has over 35 teams, boys, men and girls. Their under-18s play with us and Ben, our manager, is also head of girls' football at Froom Town United. He's worked relentlessly to build a full girls' pathway from age five to adult. It's because of this that Froom Town Women and Froom Town United have achieved two-star FA accreditation, recognising our high standards, safe environments and clear player pathways for both girls and boys into adults' football. Women's football is growing, both nationally and here in Froom and I know that I've seen in the press that growth can feel uncomfortable to many. But let me say this clearly. We are not here in competition with anybody off the pitch. We just want to keep playing football. I genuinely think that our goals are shared, but something isn't working at Badgers Hill. When the CBS was launched, we believed in its promise, its aims and its business plan. Many of our players and their families, who are low-income households, joined because we saw the chance to shape the football differently, more fairly and more inclusively. They saw it was an investment in their footballing futures. Now a new proposal is being put forward in the name of community, yet we have not been consulted, not been engaged, we haven't even been informed. In fact, we've not even, were not even mentioned explicitly in the plan before you and we should be. Until last Thursday, we had no idea that our home of over 25 years was under discussion and many of our players and supporters can't be here tonight because it's training night. But please know that they are not absent in spirit. The past few years have been difficult on and off the pitch. Our league restructured, forcing us into hard financial choices and we elected to be relegated. We shouldn't be just part of a community plan. We are a team that has professional standards and accreditation. It's more than petty squabbles. We've dealt with broken promises, misdirected funds, inappropriate comments, some sexualising our players and persistent sidelining. We experience chauvinism and misogyny whilst being told that it's banter, that we are too sensitive or publicly that we are just looking for drama. We see it all and we genuinely ignore it, but we shouldn't have to deal with it in the first place. We are told that we are lucky to play football at Badgers Hill and not in the way that they meant we are. It's a special place and it's been our home for 25 years. I'd like to hope that the legacy of Froom Town Council helping to save the football club isn't for Froom Town Women to be forced out whatever comes next. Women's football culture is different. It's welcoming, family-focused and respectful. When we hosted a VIP guest recently, they found me not giving a speech or a tour of the ground but helping a fan find somewhere to change her baby's nappy and keep her toddler occupied whilst doing so. That's the environment that we create. That's what women's football looks like. That's the tone. That's the care. And that's the community we are trying to build with no budget, no ego and no exclusion. So I ask you, how does the proposal on the table be positively different to what currently exists? If this proposal claims to serve the community, ask yourselves which community, who benefits, what's at the table and who's being left out? Because if women and girls aren't part of it, then it isn't for everybody. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking to be included properly, respectfully and transparently. And actually, that's all we've ever asked. Please don't support a vision of Froom's future that leaves women and girls on the sidelines. We don't want to fight for our place, we just want to belong. Our footprint is light, our impact is not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Anna.
I can't possibly follow what Tara's just said and that spirit was very evident when I went to see your team play on Sunday and what really struck me was in... I always call it the interval, but apparently it's called half-time in football. In half-time, there were some young girls ranging from kind of toddler age to maybe eight just kicking a ball around on the pitch and I just thought that was a really special introduction to football for them. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight not just as your local MP but as someone who cares deeply about both community sport and the values that make Froom such a remarkable place to live. We're a town known for doing things differently, boldly, creatively and with community at our heart. Froom Town Council's long been an example of progressive, community-led leadership. That's why the decision about the future of Badgers Hill is so important because it's not just drawing up a lease, it's a decision about the kind of town we want to be. Badgers Hill has been part of the Froom community for generations and if the council's considering leasing the site, there are two principles I'd like to see upheld. First, there must be clear community benefits, whether through investment in grassroots sport, wider access for young people or protections for the site's long-term use. This decision must reflect the values that Froom stands for. I believe that means engaging openly with the community before final decisions are made. Secondly, and I can't say this with enough emphasis, there must be a guarantee written into some heads of terms, not just words, of ongoing access and support for Froom Town Women. Their contribution to local sport and to the lives of young women and girls in our town cannot be overlooked. Froom Town Women, along with Froom Town FC, offer footballing opportunities to over 100 local girls, creating a positive, inclusive space in a sport that struggles with gender inequality, as we've very powerfully heard. As we work nationally to level the playing field for women in sport, we must also do so locally and that starts with making sure the women's team has a secure and supported home here at Badgers Hill. This is not about opposition to progress or private investment, far from it. I welcome investment into any community facility, but it is about making sure that any change to the stewardship of a community ground honours the legacy, inclusivity and progressive spirit of Froom. A great deal of time and energy from both town councillors and officers has gone into supporting Badgers Hill and I want to thank them sincerely for that, I know it's been hard. It's also important to recognise that significant public funds have been invested on behalf of local taxpayers. I hope councillors will carefully consider the legacy that this collective effort and investment should leave for the people of Froom, not just for today but for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Okay. Did anybody else want to raise anything specifically around the football club question? Any councillors? No? Fiona? Sorry, gentleman over there. Peter, would you pass the microphone back, please?
Thank you. Ben Voland and the manager of Froom Town Women. I'd just like to clarify following the meeting today when we will be informed of the outcome and the next steps and ask that we be informed directly, please not via a third party. Thank you very much.
Thank you, understood. Fiona?
Can I ask Tara some, like a question or a couple of questions, just to sort of try and understand a bit more? So you, you said the first time you'd heard about there being a potential, you know, deal was on Thursday. Have, are you, are you aware of what the deal, of what, you know, of who is sort of proposing the deal or what the deal is or anything? Have you, is it... Okay. And what, and can I ask unofficially, if you do know, what sort of, could you pass my to Tara? What is your sort of view of it? Do you have any sort of sense of, you know, of what it might mean to you? Like what is your view of it as a, if, you know, as Anna suggested, there were sort of heads of terms with, you know, a commitment to women's football written in, how would you feel about that? So I'm trying to be really careful about my language, it's, yeah, sorry.
So Peter started the meeting off by saying there have been assurances made, but they're words currently.
If it was, if it was, you know, and I'm saying this is a hypothetical and I understand that maybe you can't, but it's a difficult situation. But if there was it sort of written into heads and heads of terms, that there was a commitment to women's football, how would you feel about it then?
That would be an improvement. And currently we have a lease to use the pitch at Badgers Hill, so we have a, you know, a legal agreement with the CBS. We know where we are, we know who we can talk to if we've got issues. Our biggest fear with this is it's a complete step into the unknown and there's nothing to protect us, there's nothing, other than as Tara said, at the moment there are words. And obviously, I think the first question that we, many people sent in is can we have assurance? And that's really what it's about for us, assurance that we can continue to play football. And that is all we're asking, is that we can carry on playing, you know, where we have been. So yes, a properly written, worded agreement with agreement from all parties, complete transparency and any clauses, conditions, costs etcetera, so we all know where we stand. That would be a big step in the right direction, yes.
And can I just ask, is anyone here from Froom Town United, so the other football team you mentioned?
Yes, I am from Froom Town.
Oh yeah, as from both. And is there a similar sense there as well?
I think Froom Town United are a little bit more removed from it. Froom Town United are a very successful operation. They're pretty much standing on their own two feet really well. They've got their own pitches and their own facilities as well as some of the use of Badgers Hill. So I think they're more kind of waiting to see what happens. But clearly, they are a huge part of the football community in Froom. We have 600 kids playing football at Froom Town United every week and their families. So that's a massive part of the landscape, but I think at the moment they're just waiting to see what happens. They will continue to build their club successfully and we will work hard to do that and that's all done through volunteers.
Where, can I ask where you train? You said you don't train at Badgers Hill, you play at Badgers Hill. Where do you train?
So during the summertime, we train at Froom Town United's pitches because we have that agreement with them and they let us use our pitches for no cost. During the winter, we use Southwood 3G pitch, which is the only 3G pitch we've got in Froom, which people probably know. Froom Town United also use that 3G pitch and because it's in such high demand, it's pretty much booked up every day outside of school all winter.
So another 3G pitch would be, would be a good, would be a positive thing for Froom?
Two or three, yeah, would be. And they would get filled.
Let's get one first, like, you know, thank you, sorry. That's really helpful, thank you very much.
I'm just going to go to...
Just jump in on that quickly.
Yes, sure.
Sorry, I'm really right, it wasn't aimed at me, but sorry. Tara and Ben are being put in a slightly tricky position because they know a lot unofficially about what's happening and we've been asked not to say what's happening, so I think that's why there's slight hesitation. I hope they won't mind me saying that my impression is that it's not just that they want things written down, they want an evidence of a commitment to a culture change and it's probably understandable for them to feel that without discussing who's behind the bid, if there's a feeling that maybe things are being said to get the bid over the line, but there's not a commitment to them, they need some evidence that there's going to be a real commitment to actually actively supporting women and girls being in Badgers Hill, not just tolerating them.
Because I think that's what came across really powerfully, Tara, what you said. And I mean, I think every woman in the room was probably nodding along as you were talking about the misogyny and the, you know, the remarks and everything. And so that's what you're talking about there, about the culture change. But yeah, okay, thank you, that's really helpful, thank you.
Mel?
Hi, I'm Mel Asher. I've also been involved with this for two years. It's probably one of the more complex bits of negotiations I've ever done and I've done a lot over the, over the years. And I wouldn't say it's all been successful. We never wanted to run a football club. We haven't got the skills to run a football club and we wouldn't be very good at it. What we did do is we bought the land on which a football stadium is and the club came with it. And I think it would be fair to say that we've had many ups and downs in the last few years, some of which were disappointing, some of which I thought had real possibilities. I think you've got a licence to use the pitch now, not a lease. A licence is very different to a lease and doesn't give you any form of security. So we would obviously want to improve that as much as we could. The business plan, which you have or have not seen, wink, wink, is... We weren't party to drawing it up. So we've been playing catch-up ever since we've managed to get hold of a copy. There are some interesting and surprising things in there that I think might not be, might be better, might certainly would be better than where we are now. And I think some fundamental changes are likely to take place if it's implemented. But whether or not we can introduce a guarantee is another matter. I think this whole deal, without giving any details, is hanging on a thread. And what we've got as a town council is we have no income. Nobody's paid us anything, even though we've managed to get £50,000 worth of grants. And I guess everybody in this £500,000 here, I guess, and I guess most people in this room would say, well, that's not a good chaperoning of public money. So we want some returns somewhere along the lines here. And what we, what none of us want is the football ground not being used any longer, which is where we were when we first purchased it. But that is always a possibility. So I think that, I think we need to just bear that in mind in terms of where we are. There's nobody in this room, certainly as councillors, who don't want you to be successful and don't want to fulfil all of the hopes and aspirations that you outlined. We are equally as sure that that's where we need to be. You know, and the possibility, and again, I think I'm not giving too much away, that there will be, there could be a 3G pitch which might make a difference for everybody in terms of how much Badgers Hill could be used without it turning into a muddy quagmire. So I kind of, I don't know what the outcome of all this is going to be. I mean, great, well done for chivvying us and making us realise that, you know, we really need to get our act together on this as much as we can. So we wanted to be successful. Whether or not we can get it over the line is a matter of conjecture, so you need to be aware of that.
Okay. Rachel, was there somebody, oh, is it Lenka, did you want to speak?
Working, yeah. Yeah, Lenka from Fairfroom, for people that don't know me. I just wanted to touch on the community side because like you guys, we want some assurance. You know, we haven't been able to use the football club as a venue and it is, I suppose, I want assurances that it will continue as a community venue, given, you know, what people have been saying. All the, you know, bookings have been cancelled, you know, that needs to be a community venue that's open to all the charities to use it like we used to use it. We used to do some great Sunday lunches up there, holiday sessions, you know, feeding, you know, local people using it. So I would like to see some assurances that community groups are going to be able to use it in the future, please.
Thank you, Lenka. Okay. I think Lisa, do you want to say a few words and then we'll draw this item to a close?
It's not necessarily that I want to say a few words, I'm just aware that we have somebody from the Football Supporters' Association here. And I was just wondering if you had a view that you wanted to share?
Well, this is a public Q and A session, if you...
We'd very much like to hear your views on it.
Our view is that it's preferable...
Sorry, would you mind just introducing yourself for the tape?
My name's Darren Bernstein. I am the head of the National Game and Community Ownership at the Football Supporters' Association. So my predecessor and colleague was involved at the start to, with the town council to take over the stadium. As a, as a point of clarity, when the stadium went into public ownership, the football club didn't, which is really important, because what then allowed to happen was that the football club was able to continue to run as it had done beforehand, which is different from the stadium being run as a community, as a community asset. We are where we are. It feels to me like the decision is around a philosophical battle or a, an economic battle between economic and financial income versus social value. And the social value is absolutely critical and massive. Having assurances just to play isn't the same as a welcoming cultural environment for women and young people. And that's a big fear for us because we've seen it a million times before, where, when it simply becomes about the bottom line, women's football does get shunted aside and it shouldn't do, particularly with a, with a community ownership model. And under a community benefit society, it's the best environment for women's football to thrive and grow. Where, at the moment, we have in a, in a small town like Froom, effectively, a women's team, a junior team and a men's team, all operating semi-independently, that's not a good environment for developing football in the town. And actually, they should all feed into each other. There are great risks with moving from public ownership of the property into private ownership of the property. We come across it all across the country. And I guess, without taking too much of the floor, I would, I would urge the council to beware strangers bearing gifts, promises of putting a 3G down. Whether that, if that's from public, from private money, they're expensive, they're a million pounds. So somebody saying, I will fund a 3G, should be taken with a pinch of salt because I'm dealing with another club in the north where they're currently playing 80 miles from their hometown because their owner promised a 3G. So there are great risks and I would urge the council to, if, if they are to go ahead with this, and as the Football Supporters' Association, we understand the really tough environment that local authorities are finding themselves in. But if they have to sell it, make sure there are numerous strings attached, and I've got a list of them here, which we'll talk about later. So, sorry to talk for so long, but you asked me the question, so...
That's helpful, thank you very much. So I think we'll now draw a line under the football club public discussion. We will have a closed session later on this evening when we're talking about some of the financial considerations. But for those of you who don't feel interested in the remaining parts of the agenda, do feel free to leave the room now if you, if you wish to do so. And thank you very much for showing up this evening, we do really appreciate you coming along. Okay. Onto a more general questions and comments from councillors. Anita, did you have something quickly?
Yes, I did, thank you very much, Andy. It was, it's really just a quick thank you to Steve Deakin in person. I mentioned this last time, I think, about the monitoring of the nursery, the Pepperbox Nursery in Berkeley Road. And I was able to thank Rachel personally at that meeting for the police attendance there, which has been really helpful. But I would like a letter written to Steve Deakin to thank him too for arranging that it is stewarded by Somerset, so thank you.
Thanks, Anita. Anything from anybody else that they want to raise at this point? No? Yeah. It's fine, it's fine. Okay. I think then we should move on to item three, which I think, Jane, you were going to lead on.
Thank you. Thank you, that's better. So we're bringing in this item for ratification. The decision to withdraw the council's objection to the Selwood Garden community planning application was made by Paul Wynn, town clerk, myself, in conjunction with councillors. By ratifying the decision, it provides a record of that approval. And this is important as we will be presenting this as the council's view at the planning inquiry in August. Due to the deadlines that were involved, there wasn't time to bring this to council for approval before the Somerset planning meeting on the 28th of March, where this application was, sorry, the Selwood Garden community application was being discussed. And it was important that Froom Town Council's position was made clear to Somerset councillors at that meeting. We also had to meet the 4th of April deadline to submit our comments to the planning inspector. So I know you've all read the paper, but just to remind you, here are the, oh, yeah, there, here are the bullet point reasons that we have agreed a new position and removed our objection on. The detail of those bullet points is set out in the report, but if you'd like me to expand on any of them, then let me know. And are there any questions before we move to the recommendation?
Actually, it's not on there. What happened to the recommendations of the traffic islands at the A361 and A36 were going to be improved? Or this scheme couldn't go ahead until those improvements were done?
You mean the roundabouts?
Yes.
Yeah, so Highways England had asked that any decision wasn't issued within a six-month period because they needed to agree an amount of money that would be required by the developers to submit in order to contribute towards upgrading those roundabouts. That, as I understand it, has all been agreed now and it will form part of any section 106 agreement.
Thank you, thanks, Jane. It's not really a question, it's more an observation. I think, given the ambivalence, shall we say, towards the development, I think it's really key that our decision and why we're making this decision is communicated really clearly. I don't think it has been so far, which has led to the usual observations, shall we say, from some members of the community. And whilst it is disappointing, it's necessary, but I do think that needs to be really clearly explained in all our communications about it.
So, as I said, the inquiry is taking place in August and there has been something in the press, we've released a statement and so on, but we will be making sure that we do that prior to the hearing or inquiry.
Thank you.
Anita.
Thanks, Andy, thank you, Jane. I just really wanted to talk a little bit about the medical provision on site because I was under the impression that the Froom Medical Centre feel that everything should still be happening there and there's no requirement for a satellite site?
Yeah, so the bullet point alone is probably a little bit confusing. But the medical provision on site, you're quite right, the medical practice didn't require any contribution towards the, or any capital funding. So no money towards building works because, as we learned last week, the footprint of the medical practice is actually larger than it needs to be to accommodate the amount of people that use it. However, you know, given the amount of houses that are proposed, 1,700, you know, it's obvious that the amount of patients is going to increase over the potential 15 years that this development will take to reach completion. So there is now an agreement, or there will be an agreement in place that says at different stages through the build, so 500, 1,000 and 1,500 occupation trigger points, it will be reassessed as to whether or not a further provision or something on site needs to be provided. So, and, you know, we were talking about monitoring as well, and that's one of the things that we, if we are still here...
I think, just, if you'll excuse me, Max, in the interest of time, given that this is a recommendation to ratify a previously made decision, we should move forward to a vote on that.
Thanks, Jane.
Can I have somebody propose? So I get Anita proposing and Nick seconding, all those in favour? I think Sarah's abstaining.
So that's a majority and Sarah abstaining.
Yeah. Is it just Sarah abstaining? Not missed anybody? That's fine. It's called democracy. Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you. And just quickly, whilst I have the floor, please don't forget to send me any comments about white lines, re-lining. Thank you.
Okay. Item four then, I think, Rachel, are you taking the, oh, sorry, Nick. You're, you're out of here, we'll call you back later.
Good evening, everyone. I get a bit of a stir from the chair, you want to whistle through this for an extra agenda, so I'll be brief. Has everyone read the report?
Yes.
Excellent. There, okay, brilliant, okay. Three main things really to sort of talk about, to think about, and that is, our brilliant news, we've taken on the responsibility for the Wednesday and Saturday markets. I think it's a great thing, we've wanted this for quite some time. The initial plan was to get somebody to manage it on an interim basis, to bring in somebody who has experience of running markets, while we worked out the best way forward. Unfortunately, that individual wasn't able to fulfil that initial plan. So Rachel and team have performed miracles in getting up and running and managing the markets between then and now. So moving forward, what are our options? Three options mainly, one, that we take somebody on, working for the town council as an employee to manage the markets. Second one, second one, static, is it, my hair maybe? Second one was to look at maybe somebody interested in forming a CIC, Community Interest Company. And the third one's to look at a seasoned practice operator who might take on running the markets for us. The first one, I think we can all agree, brings problems, taking on a member of staff whose role that is, expensive, commitment onto our workforce, have a, you know, holiday times, sickness and so on, and we have nobody with that expertise. Second one, CIC, kind of really, that's quite legally complicated process to go through. We kind of looked at that, explored it and thought, no, let's look at the third option. Third option was to look at an existing market operator, to see if they'd be interested in taking it on. Everybody in this room will know the Froom Independent Market has an extraordinary organisation that's in many ways transformed Froom, brilliant. They've got, they've got expertise in running a nationally successful and widely acclaimed market. So the option Rachel and I explored with two of the directors from the independent market, was to look at them taking on, for a limited period to start with, managing and running the market. It is, there are lots and lots of advantages in that, and as you've all read the papers, I won't bother you by going through them. But in terms of what's financially viable and sensible, which will give us value for money, which will bring practice and seasoned operators in to run the market for us, I suggest it's a really good way forward. And if we can have the recommendations up, we can move. Unless anyone's got any points they want to make. And up from Fiona?
Just a couple of points that I think are absolutely in favour of the Froom Independent Market. I mean, they have, you know, do a brilliant job and they've obviously got the expertise. I think there is something, the question's around sort of the strategic oversight, which it says that we retain as FTC. How, how will that work in practice? Do they report back to us on a regular basis? What will that be? What, you know, because there is a sort of sense about what the direction of the market is and, you know, what it is sort of going forward and how it evolves, I think is really important. For me, it's really important that it's a market for local people. And also, it says sort of they're border girls, support independent businesses, but I think there's also a broader thing around, you know, supporting independent food growers and producers as well in the local area, there's that sort of role in food resilience, which I think is really important.
We agree, there's no disagreement with that. When we met with two of the directors, one of whom's in the room, we talked about benchmarking at the start, seeing where we're at, and then looking at sort of key performance indicators without tying them into too much. But it's along the sort of ethos of involving local people benefiting the town businesses. And yeah, a very light touch, can we support, is there something that's missing, do we need to do anything, have we had any feedback? Firstly, I think something that's been missing a bit in the past has been, we've felt a bit as a, I felt a bit as a town councillor in the market ward before, not really able to refer feedback from local independent businesses back to the market. I feel that's very, there's a very good relationship between the council and the independent market and people who work and support them who are in the room. So really positive about it, I think, you know, the oversight is very much a light touch, I know Rachel will be looking at that as well.
Can we maybe just put something in the service level agreement that is about sort of a yearly, you know, update to council or something, you know, that therefore means that there's sort of weakened, yeah?
I think we were going to look at that six months and then the year, but yeah.
Great, brilliant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just understand the money, please. So we're saying that we're taking this from the devolution budget, yeah, for this year and in subsequent years? Because the commitment is for three years there, albeit, and it tapers down from 25 to 15. So is that money in the base budget? In other words, is that, is that sum in perpetuity or are we going to have to precept additionally once again?
It is part of the base budget, I understand.
Yes, it is part of the base budget.
Okay, thanks. Can I have somebody propose that we accept these recommendations? Got Tracy proposing, Sarah seconding, all those in favour?
It's a majority and one abstention, is that right?
Yeah.
Lisa's abstaining.
Yeah. And of course, I...
Yeah, can I just briefly say, particularly thank, I think, to some of the stewards who've been working down at the market. I was there on Saturday briefly and they set out tables and chairs with chessboards and, but it's just a really lovely feel. A part of our arrangement means we've now got the apron around the library, you know, that sort of flat space, so there's a lot I think we can do with that. I'm looking forward to the amazing independent markets ideas.
Great, thank you, thanks. And now, item five, which is an update on the devolution project from Max. Max, we do need to move on to item six by about eight o'clock.
We do. That is like a warning, my God. Okay, so I just want to say, it's brilliant to see all of this happening, you know, we, a key decision has been taken by Bill Revins and so like, all of these things are kind of ours now, which is a kind of prospectus coming to life, I don't like this microphone. We should be aware though, that we always said that this was the beginning. So we need to be on the lookout for further devolution opportunities. And I just wanted to comment just very briefly on the fact that the rest of English local government, if people have noticed, is going through a kind of massive revolution. If you don't live under a combined authority and a mayor now, you will do within the next year. So there was a, we were part of, Somerset was part of a bid called the Heart of Wethick Deal, which was us and Wiltshire and Orset, which got rejected by the government, but I will confidently predict that it will get approved next year. So we need also to be thinking about devolution funds, the kinds of things that we would want to try and grab for Froom. There's almost certainly going to be a focus on skills, on digital, on housing, all of these things. And so we need to have an eye out, and our MPs and our councillors need to have an eye out for that devolution deal and the kinds of things we might get out of it. The smart people across the country are kind of, you know, thinking about this already and thinking about, you know, what you might call spade-ready ideas that would take advantage of such a devolution deal. We should expect that to come and we should begin to pull that into our thinking, which is something I'll be working with Peter about. But just to... But just to this evening, it's really great to see all of these things land. There are clearly some complexities as they land, as we've just heard with markets. But it's great to see that everything coming ahead. There you go, what do you think?
Thank you. Fiona.
It's not a question for Max, it's, I'm not sure who I'm directing this to, probably Paul. In the update, it says that the FTC staff, around the Key Centre FTC staff will soon be meeting with the Education Places Education Strategy Team, that is a mouthful, at Somerset Council on-site to discuss a process for commissioning a community nursery on-site. I feel a little bit, and I might be wrong, we slightly missed a step on the Key Centre. I was sort of expecting a paper a bit like we've just had on the markets, sort of outlining the direction of travel for the Key Centre. We've sort of spoken about a business proposal. I'm not sure that we've sort of agreed that there should be a community nursery there. I'm not sure what the options are, I'm not sure. It just feels like we slightly skipped a step. To my memory, the last thing we decided was to, you know, to buy it, not what it was going to be. And I know that it's very difficult because it's community engagement and we want to hear and it is complicated. But I just want to make sure that we're not sort of rushing ahead on that.
I don't see that we are rushing ahead. Key decisions will come back to council.
Including whether they're, okay, so scoping out whether, yeah, there would be any. Because I presume there's also the opportunity of a commercial nursery, which could involve, you know, paying revenue. I mean, I'm assuming there are different options for the space, is what I'm saying.
That's what the key team is scoping out.
Okay, brilliant, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So that completes our public agenda. And our next council meeting will be on Wednesday, the 21st of May at 7pm in here. I won't be here because I'm in St Ives, but I'm sure you'll have a great meeting without me. I wanted to thank everybody who has come along this evening and then ask one of the councillors to propose that we now vote to go into confidential session. Sarah proposing, Nick Dove seconding, all those in favour?
So majority, is anyone abstaining?
Fiona.
Can you please know why we should not be deciding to sell a community public own asset to a private company in...
Okay, thank you. So we have now voted to go into a confidential session. If I can ask members of the public and press to leave.